In addition to the work that we are doing in the community, you may have noticed that we've provided packets of information for you as you were coming in this evening. Included in those packets are names of qualified remodeling companies associated with the Greater Houston Builders Association. We are also working directly with all of your home builders. And we want to help get information about the specifications of cabinets, flooring, trim, interior doors, any of the materials that were used in the original construction of your homes. So if you have not reached out to your home builders yet, we highly encourage you to do so. If you don't know who built your home, if you are not the original homeowner, please let us know and we will be happy to provide that information to you. But most importantly, we want you to know that Johnson Development is committed to finding out all the answers to what caused the flooding and making sure the LID takes concrete steps to improve the community's resilience to flooding in the future. Now, the question that was asked for some people that have lived in Riverstone for a number of years, they remember there was a school site in the area south of Hackerson Road. I actually went back and found this map that you can see and again, you can download it on the Riverstone LID's website. I showed this map because this was a marketing map that was prepared in early 2007, over 11 years ago. Right after we had purchased this additional property and shown to develop this area. And it actually shows all of the area where your homes are located, south of Hackerson Road. And again, you can't see it, but it's all SF, that's single family. It even showed the detention pond that exists. These sort of light blue areas represent the proposed school sites. And to explain that in a little bit more detail, when we first started developing Riverstone, we worked hand in hand with the Fort Bend Independent School District, let them know how many homes we were proposing to build. And the school district tells us how many schools we would need within our community. They are the ones that told us we needed three elementaries and one middle school. Every year as we developed, we continued to communicate our development with the school district. And they would tell us, no, we're fine, the First Colony Schools are dropping in enrollments, the Riverstone children are able to fill those enrollments. And that's why there were a lot of questions about why don't we have more schools? So I just wanted to make that clear that we've worked directly with the school district. And that's why, obviously, that was not the final location of the schools. It ended up getting moved to this location. But regardless of whether it was a school or a home, that area has always been planned to be developed.
Continuing with some of the questions related to the LID organization is, how is the LID management appointed to their jobs? What is the tenure and what are the required qualifications? When does the current term end? How are they held accountable for failure to do their jobs and by whom? I'll let Nancy continue on a second. But as a LID director, I will tell you it is basically a volunteer position. And we work closely with the operators and everyone to help generate, make sure that we have a system in place that is able to handle the events that we had today. And then Nancy?
Correct, yes. The LID directors are appointed by the Fort Bend County Commissioners Court. There are three members who serve on each board and they serve four-year terms apiece. The LID 15 directors' current terms will expire in September 2020. And in LID 19, the current directors' terms expire in October of 2018. Now that being said, you know, Fort Bend County is constantly reviewing interest and applications for people who are interested in serving on levy district boards. And we have worked with the county commissioners who have decided that maybe a midterm reappointment is appropriate. If this is something that is of interest to you, please feel free to contact Commissioner Patterson's office or Commissioner Prestige's office. And I will, after this, try to add contact information for both county commissioners onto the levy district website.
Thank you. How are all the LIDs organizationally structured? Specifically, how is each LID incorporated and what are the rules of engagement with other LIDs? Who resolves issues between the LIDs?
So each levy district is actually a separate independent political subdivision. So again, I mentioned they're governed by a board of three directors. And generally speaking, they don't have full-time employees, they rely on consultants. They again are created by order of the Fort Bend County Commissioners Court. LID 15 was created in September of 2000 and LID 19 was created in October of 2006. There are no formal rules of engagement between the levy districts. I think it's the same analogy for two cities that are side by side, they operate independently. Do they look for opportunities to provide efficiencies? Sure. Do they try to work together and be good neighbors? Yes. Who resolves issues between the levy districts? Again, there's no formal rules. I think that oftentimes, we look to Fort Bend County to provide guidance when we're sort of at a policy point where we're stuck. But overall, there's nothing formal in terms of resolution of issues.
Does the LID have any other sources of income apart from our taxes? If so, what are the sources?
99% of the income is ad valorem taxation. The extra small percentage would come from interest earned on district funds. And also, there is a small nominal fee that comes in from builder inspections. But again, that really only applies to new construction, so it's really nominal at this point.
How much did the events around Harvey cost above normal maintenance and operation? What will be the impact on the LID tax?
At this point, you know, we really don't know the final cost. I will say that we are documenting all of the costs that we know to date. And all of this will be submitted as eligible, if it's eligible, to FEMA for reimbursement. FEMA's got a long, slow process, we're still waiting on payments and reimbursements from FEMA from 2016. But to the extent it's eligible, we're certainly going to apply for federal funds. Now, all that being said, both levy districts, you know, have healthy operating reserves. You know, it is the rainy day fund and here we are at the rainy day. You know, the, both LID boards are committed to try to manage expenditures, look at future capital projects, you know, in a way that minimizes effects on the tax rates. Now, I can't guarantee anything, but that is the objective of both boards.
I understand that this is an unprecedented amount of rainfall that occurred. But now that you are aware of how this situation unfolded, what is being done to prevent this in the future? This is mine. As a board director, one of the things I've started asking early on is what's happening? Why do we have the flooding? How can we make sure this doesn't happen again? And that's where we came up with the thought to do the after-action review, to ask the operators to step back and do a full analysis of what went right, what went wrong, and what can be fixed in the future. In addition, we want to look and see exactly the timeline, what happened, and have them review our policies and procedures for communication, for operations of the district, and let us know what could have been done differently to improve that process. Like I said at the get-go, we know that with an event of this size, there's definitely going to be ideas and opportunities for improvement that we're going to seek out of this. The other question is, what is the timeline for the after-action review? I'm going to tell you, I don't know the exact timeline. This is a process where we're going to ask the operators to actually go through their policies and procedures. You see tonight, the information that Chad provided from Costello. We are already beginning the process of backtracking of what had happened during this event so we can model it out. The other piece of that is, will we do a root cause analysis? And is this going to be done by an independent third party? And can we input in the selection process? We have a process today where we actually will go out and identify and hire a third party for this process. We want to make sure that this third party is qualified to do this level of peer review. It will be an engineering firm. And the way we're going to do that is we are going to put this through the bidding process that we normally have with our levy board process. So to the extent that you can be involved with the bidding process, yes.
I'm going to qualify that as his attorney and say it's not a bidding process. It's a request for proposals. We are legally prohibited from soliciting competitive bids, but it's a comprehensive review and consideration of qualifications.
Thank you. All right, next question. Most of us have no flood insurance. We have been contacted, we have not been contacted by FEMA Justice and don't have rental assistance. These are $400,000-plus homes. And it appears that we need to dip into our own personal savings to rebuild. What will the LID and the HOA do to help? I told you we'd answer all the questions we received.
I get the fun questions. The short answer, I'm going to tell you right now, the LID cannot write checks to homeowners. Now, that makes me the least popular person in the room right now. And it's not the answer that you wanted to hear. But the LID did not take affirmative action to condemn property. And accordingly, the Texas Constitution prohibits the levy district from using public funds for private purposes. So again, there's not much we can do by way of writing a check. However, we do have a lot of tools in our toolbox and ways to assist the community. Are we going to look at those tools in the after-action review? Yes. And you know, I will provide any advice that my clients ask me in terms of what else can we do to assist the community within our powers? And I will offer all of the tools that they ask for.
A big concern?
Here comes Trey.
Let me finish this question.
I think it's related to you.
The second part was about what can the HOA do? And I'm only one out of three board members, so I can't speak for the board. But we have already asked the question about what the homeowners association can legally do to help out the homeowners. We don't have an answer yet, but we just wanted to make that clear that the question has been asked.
Stay there Trey. A big concern is waiting time for water remediation or rebuilding. Almost all water remediation companies have a backlog and some have unaccordable pricing. What can the LID and HOA do to get a general contractor in the area to offer these services as quickly as possible with reasonable pricing and ballpark?
Right, like I said before, we are working with the home builders. You have lists of qualified remodelers that can also help. And I know there's several other resources that are being provided as well. So that's one of the ways that we can help immediately.
Are there any federal matching funds that LID 15 or LID 19 can attain to modify, obtain if modifications are made to the levy, pumps, design, or retention areas?
I'm sure there are funds available. There are, I know that there are grant programs that we can apply towards and we will be researching all of those opportunities and providing feedback as we learn about those.
What is the LID or HOA's plan to desanitize and clean up the streets in LID 19? The homeowners already have a big task to make their homes livable, but should at least have some assurances that someone is taking care of the neighborhood streets and make them usable again. At this time, we could use a lot of help from the authorities.
And the timing of this question may have been submitted before the street cleaning was underway. I believe that the street cleaning program has started within the neighborhoods. Obviously, you know, not all the neighborhoods have been cleaned, but I believe they're making multiple passes. If we get additional information on street cleaning, we'll certainly post that. And certainly, if there's any additional comments or you're seeing areas that aren't cleared, you can submit them in the inquiry page on the Riverstone LID website.
We're specifically asking about fresh water because the street cleaning is happening, it's dry. The issue is the dirt that they're clearing up is both infected and all being contaminated.
So I believe traditionally, they're using, they were using the street sweeper that sort of just brushed it around. But in this particular case, they did order the special vacuum trucks that actually suck up the debris into the truck itself so that it wouldn't swirl around the neighborhood. That being said, I don't know if those are still being implemented, but I'll certainly find out. And if you leave your contact information, I'll get you an answer.
What is being done to preserve the security in the flooded neighborhoods like Sweet Rye, The Orchard, Millwood, and Shadow Glen?
The four municipal utility districts, I'm sorry, five municipal utility districts, four. Four that serve Riverstone have banded together and they have a contract with the Precinct Four Constable's office. I think residents probably know who they are. There are five constables that regularly patrol Riverstone. And they're aware of sort of the issues that are hardest hit. And I think they are providing extra attention in those parts as well. Sergeant Resendez is here. If you have specific questions about security or anything that you're seeing, you can certainly feel free to ask her a question as you see her. But there are the five contract deputies that are controlling Riverstone.
Good questions related to design documents. Where can, where can we get the design documents for the LIDs along with operational procedures and permissions?
Okay, copies of all plans not only are available by contacting the LID. Fort Bend County has copies, Fort Bend County Drainage District has copies. The City of Sugar Land, for those sections that fall in Sugar Land ETJ have copies of those plans. And the City of Missouri City has copies for the neighborhoods that are in the extraterritorial jurisdiction and city limits of Missouri City. If you want to leave information with me, you can certainly leave an information request with me and we'll be happy to provide documents to you.
Who is the insurance carrier for LID 19? And what are the policy limits of that policy?
Good question. We have an insurance policy provided by McDonald Westendorf. Mid-Continent is the carrier for general liability coverage. We have coverage of $1 million per occurrence and $3 million aggregate.
Okay, that, that is actually the end of the prepared questions. One of the things we want to do now is let you guys have an opportunity to stretch your legs. Because the next part of the format is, we're going to have you guys be able to have a process to ask additional questions. We're going to pass out cards and ask that everyone complete the card with name information printed clearly. And then we will continue to answer and go through those questions. One of the things that we want to do is get everyone's questions answered. So this is a great format for us to collect the questions and then respond back to you.
The cards are coming around in these baskets, they're yellow cards. If you want one, raise your hand and someone will try to come find you.
The other piece that, is we're going to ask you to put one question per card. Because some questions may be answered by the operator and others will be answered by the engineer. So we're going to take about 15-minute break. We will get up and running again in 15 minutes from right now. Thank you.
Remember that, y'all hear me? Remember the levy system and the internal drainage system is designed for a particular event. It's designed for the 100-year event, which is 12 and a half inches of rain over one day. We received 34 inches of rain. Now, people are going to say that we received 12 inches and then that's all we had, so you should have been able to handle that. Then we had another 12 inches, we should have been able to handle that. No, that's not the way it works. We expect to have a dry system when that first 100-year event hits. And then we expect the system to be dry again by the time the next 100-year event hits. So this event was far beyond any of the design of the pump stations, detention pond systems, storm sewer collection systems, everything. And these are generally accepted criteria. This is what's used to design in Houston, Harris County, Fort Bend County, Pearland, you name it. Everybody designs for this, for this event. So I guess that's, that's my question.
Chad?
Yes?
I need clarification on this one. Chad, tell me please, Chad. Then you say it was designed for a 100-year event. It's 12 inches of, how many inches of rain is dry? Does it account for all the upstream leaks that are coming into Sweet Rye?
I, I can answer that, I answered that, I answered. I'm sorry, I answered that during the presentation, might be happy to answer it again. Yes, the 12, the 12 and a half inches is planned for in the pump station. Those other districts have extra detention within their systems. They release their water at a slower rate during a design event. The pump station is sized to pick up their water and pump it out. They didn't receive 12 inches and then we received the 34 inches. Everybody received the 34 inches of rain. It was well beyond the design capabilities of the system. But with part of the after-action plan, we are going to model this, this event and see what can be done to prevent this from happening in the future.
What, the next, the, we, we do have a process where we're going to ask these questions. The, the question that we have coming up next is... Sir? The, the next question we have is, what are the concrete steps being taken to ensure that this is not repeated? And I think Chad touched on that, we have the actual review that we're going to go through. Because as a resident and as a director, we don't want this to happen in any of the LIDs, in LID 15 or 19. We want to make sure that we do our best to make sure that we are able to model this out. There's, the engineering process will model out what happened, where the rain came from, and then what happened actually during this event. And then once we have that information, we can make informed decisions on what needs to happen next. Do we need to add pump stations? Do we need to change the, the way the water flows? That's engineering questions that, you know, we need to have the engineers and the third parties look at to make sure we're able to get this information together and make an informed decision on what dollars that we need to spend if we need to spend dollars to beat the system up. After seeing your presentation, are you saying there was no human error, mechanical failure, or intentional decision by someone that contributed to the water level increase on Monday the 28th or Tuesday the 29th in the Orchard subdivision as an example? That's from Gary Wilson.
I'm not aware of one. The after-action plan that will be prepared by a third party will be provided to the, to the residents. We're not hiding anything. We're consultants for the district. You guys are the taxpaying entity, or taxpayers. We essentially work for you, we're not hiding anything.
You stated that you do not have the legal authority to prevent the upstream neighborhoods from releasing their water and that there's nothing formal in place. Then who has the authority to regulate the amount they, multiple neighborhoods, release? There may not be, or have been, a formal legal process in place, but policy processes can be implemented. If so, where can we submit suggestions, requests? Also, when the neighboring communities release their water, are they required to provide report or data that justify for the immediate release of the water to prevent their neighborhoods from potential flood? In other words, words, do they provide reports that their communities is immediately at risk at the time of their release? And this is from Tramp U in Shadow Glen. And I think that's a legal question related to the water flow in the state of Texas.
Under current Texas law, we do not have the authority to do that. If that needs to change, it needs to change by legislative act.
Why did only Lost Creek, Millwood, Orchard flood in that area of Riverstone? In other nearby areas, EG Sienna along LJ Parkway and LJ north of Hackerson did not flood? And this is really, there, there was areas in LID 19 and LID 15 that flooded. So we're going to talk, I think we can talk to that earlier, we touched on the elevation issue, but I think Chad added more color on that.
Well, it falls directly back to the elevation. The area south of Hackerson Road is two to three feet lower than everything else. When you have that much water, water is no longer contained to the streets. It's not contained to the creeks, detention ponds, storm sewer system. It is sheet flowing everywhere it can go. Your, the water seeks its lowest level. It's going to seek out the lowest elevation in the district. That is unfortunately, the area south of Hackerson Road.
The, the height of, the height in Sienna, how high is Senova elevation? And one of the things we touched on is we are going to go through the LID 19. I can't speak to LID 15, but we can, the LID 15 directors are here. And they know that if we're going to be finding this information out in our LID, there may be something we can do there as well. But identifying what the height is in Senova is something that we can definitely probably find out and, and work with the LID on.
He's speaking on behalf of LID 19. The LID 15 board would need to vote to take action on that at their next board meeting.
The upstream flooding? That would be the state of Texas. The state of Texas regulates the water that flows and how water can be adjusted. I believe that's the...
Right, it's a, it's a property rights and state law legal framework. I mean, we don't have any independent authority to dictate upstream flows. The state of Texas. I can't hear multiple questions.
From what I'm hearing, what I understand is, is there's a lot of questions associated with the Steep Bank watershed, correct? And how the, the water starts at the, start, sorry, starts at the top of Steep Bank, flows down through, I believe it's LID 19 or 19, into LID 15. And how, if any, we can control or stop that water from flowing down? Chad touched on it, I'll ask him to touch on it again. The overall LID 19 watershed, LID 19, LID 15, and the other LID watersheds, on how Steep Bank flows and what, if anything, we could do? I believe that the answer is, we can't really do much unless the state of Texas changes the laws on how you can move water. I think Nancy and Chad can touch on that more. If there's more questions on that, we can continue to talk about the, the Steep Bank flow. So I think the, the question came up earlier, someone asked it about there's gates that are there off of Lake Riverstone Drive. And the question is, can we have closed the gates that are behind Lake Riverstone Drive and restricted the flow of water from Steep Bank and flooded LID 19, LID 15?
They're all part of the same watershed. So again, it, all of the water in the watershed was flowing to the same area. And there's no way that LID 19 independently could have restricted any of the flows once you were out of those banks. There, there's no structure separating LID 19 and 15. There, there's no structure separating lid nineteen and fifteen. Chad, are you aware of a structure?
Alright guys, hey listen. We have a lot of questions here that people, people submitted to the process. We will stay here, we will stay here until the questions are answered. Okay, well I, alright, I'll just keep going. The, the questions are answered several times.
Chad, why is there one hundred and fifty gallons per minute in one pump station and eighty thousand gallons per minute in the other?
Part of my presentation. But hey guys, we said at the get-go, we wanna have the questions answered by everybody. You need to give Chad an opportunity to answer the questions before people start yelling stuff. We asked that they're not be yelling and hollering. We're committed to getting all these questions answered. We will stay here as long as it takes to go through every one of these yellow sheets. And then if we need to come back, we'll come back again and we'll answer the questions. So, we wanna give Chad an opportunity to answer the questions and then we'll continue down this process. We do not wanna have this meeting just turning into a screaming match back and forth between the levee and the, the operators and the residents. Everyone okay with that? Thank you. Chad, please go forward with your question.
Okay, uh, one of the, one of the questions I heard was, why does Steep Bank Creek only have an eighty thousand gallon per minute pump station while Alcorn Bio has a hundred and fifty thousand gallon, uh, uh, gallon per minute pump station? If you recall in part of my presentation, pump station sizing is a two-part, two-part process. Part of it has to do with the volume of storage available in the system. The more storage you have in the system, the smaller the pump station needs to be. Remember, we designed for a hundred-year event. This was more than a hundred-year event. Our storage facilities were full. The streets were full. The hundred and fifty thousand gallon per minute pump station, frankly, it did use, you did benefit from it if you lived in the Steep Bank watershed because water was flowing into that watershed just like it was flowing into the south parts of, of, uh, Riverstone across Haggerson Road. At some point though, the watershed divide actually, you know, reestablishes itself once the water levels reach a certain point. What was the other question?
The gates with that, the legacy gates that are out there?
The legacy gates that are out there, uh, there's been a number of questions as to why we didn't close those gates. The, uh, uh, simple answer is none of the gates were closed, uh, uh, from any of the systems north, north of, uh, of the, of the river during this event. The portions, the portions of south, portions of, of the area, portions of lid nineteen, south of Haggerson Road, you know, were the most greatly impacted because, because of elevation. The water started flooding the streets.
The, I think covered that too. Why did only Lost Creek, Millwood, Orchard flood in that area of Riverstone? In other nearby areas, Sienna along LJ Parkway, LJ north of Haggerson did not flood? So, the question is, is one related to the elevation issue. And we covered that briefly, but we can go into more detail on it.
Those, those gates are not, those gates are not flood management gates. Their design is open or closed. By closing a gate, we could have flooded five thousand homes. We don't know. We don't know. We don't know what we could have flooded. Nobody has ever modeled an event of this size. Models to make, models for thirty-four inches of rainfall have never been performed by anybody. And asking us to go close a gate, uh, to, to help one area over another area in the middle of a storm when we don't know what, what additional rain is coming, is, is, there's so many unknowns.
Would, the, the next question we have coming up, would doubling the capacity of the pump station from eighty thousand gallons per minute to one hundred and sixty thousand gallons per minute have avoided the flooding? One of the things that we are gonna do through the after-action review and the engineering review is look at the capacity of the pumps and identify if there does need to be additional changes we need to make going forward. At this point in time, that is a, a future-looking question that we don't have the answer to, but it's something that we, you know, it may not be one hundred and sixty thousand gallons. It may be more or less, and that's what we'll continue to work through. Why did our street, streets flood and it took several days to drain? I think Chad talked about it a bit earlier, but we'll go through it.
I tried to answer this. I apologize if it wasn't a clear no. It takes a long time when water is, is in streets, it's in detention ponds. Everything is over, over its capacity, over its design capacity. Uh, I tried to, I would love to have that, uh, animation of the funnel. As a funnel, as a funnel is, is large, it takes a longer time for that water to dissipate or drop in the top part of the funnel. But as the water starts to get into the creeks and into the detention pond systems, the water falls much more quickly. So, that's why it took so long to get this water out, out of the, out of the system. We pumped one point, on Steep Bank alone, we pumped one point three billion gallons of water. That's four Ascarones full of water.
Is, this is a question related to the overall levee system. Is digging out Steep Bank Creek an option to increase the capacity? So, the question is, would additional retention help with the capacity of the district?
Additional storage is always a good thing. To deepen Steep Bank Creek would not necessarily be that much of a disadvantage. You'd have to expand Steep Bank Creek all the way south to the river because the, you know, otherwise you're gonna have a standing pool of water in Steep Bank Creek at your outfalls. So, I think it's something we look at in the after-action plan, but, you know, as I sit here right now, I, I, I don't think that that's a, a viable, uh, option. But certainly additional storage in the system is always a good thing.
A question from Lost Creek from Jay Green. What is the basis for a hundred and fifty thousand gallon minimum lid fifteen pump versus eighty gallon, eighty thousand gallon minimum lid fifteen pumps? When lid fifteen has outflowed into lid nineteen, who from lid nineteen approved lowering of the road between, uh, lid nineteen, fifteen and lid nineteen? I think the first question goes to, it's an equation of retention versus, uh, pump capacity. The next question, I believe, that's the, I don't know which road?
It's the lowering of LJ Parkway. That was, that was asked up here. Uh, the lowering of LJ Parkway had zero to do with this flood. Zero.
The, the, if you're asking exactly between, uh, uh, if you're going on LJ Parkway, going over that hump?
LJ and Haggerson Road, yes.
Yeah, that was lowered because there was a line of psychuses. As you were coming down LJ Parkway, you couldn't see people coming out of Haggerson. It didn't, it was related to flooding.
No, the, the pumps are sized to convey the design storm under undeveloped conditions from these areas north of Riverstone. Let's leave it, let's, let's say north of Riverstone. They have additional detention within their districts as being lid one fifteen, first calling lid, and Fort Bend lid two. They have additional storage within their system so that they do not need pumps. That undeveloped flow during a design storm event is considered in the Steep Bank Creek pump station sizing. Yes, sir.
So, the, the, I guess the, the short answer is yes.
I like mine better.
Was there ever a time when this sluice gate being closed kept the water inside the levee at a higher level than the Brazos? So, I, I guess this is a, a question, I think it's from Diane in Shadow Glen. So, the question, from what I understand to me, is was there a time when the gates, the gate on our side of the levee was kept closed, but we could have actually opened it up and allowed the water to go out once we moved back to gravity flow? I can answer that question because I called Jeff and these guys and I said, listen, I wanna be there on the levee when you open that gate up and we return to gravity flow. So, we were on them several times a day. When are we gonna return to gravity flow? When are we gonna return to gravity flow? Because we knew that once we switched from a pumping situation to a gravity flow situation, the water would leave the district at a much quicker rate. So, I believe it was seven thirty, uh, one morning, it was early. We were out there and we watched them actually open up those sluice gates. And even when they opened up those sluice gates, the pressure from the Brazos was still pushing up against, uh, the, the flap gates enough where we were just seeing some flow coming back out. So, as soon as we could have opened those gates, I believe we opened the gates. Are there, this is Kurt from Kensington. Are there plans to install additional pumps for Steep Bank Creek? And there's two questions. What will be done to regulate upstream flows into Steep Bank Creek? We, we've talked about the regulated flows of the Steep Bank. It will be something we'll continue to look at and when we model out the after-action review, we'll look and see, okay, where does that water come from? The after-action review will tell us, do we need to install additional pumps at the Steep Bank Creek area? Right now, we have the eighty gallons per minute. Do we need to move to a, a larger capacity? And then, once we decide that, how much does it cost? And that's a process that would, the, the board will go through with not only the engineer, but that will also be part of our third-party review as well. Well, the, the, I can't tell you the costs today, but you know, we will... I, I completely understand because I'm in the same position. I wanna know now, what could have been done to fix this now? I don't wanna wait three months or six months. But the reality is, we do need to work with the engineers. We need to work with the third party. Like, we have engineers, but we also have people that are gonna look and model this problem out. It's not simple saying, yes, we had water in there. Let's just go and build a pump station that can handle two hundred and fifty gallons per minute. And then if we were to make an uninformed decision to build additional pump capacity and it happened again, what, what, what do you look at? So, what you do is you have the engineers who are, who've designed these type of systems. Look at it and say, okay, this is what we saw happen during Harvey. And one of the things I asked them to do is when we were out there, is we have, uh, stakes in the ground. We have satellite imaging, so we know where the water came to. So, we're gonna be able to identify where that water sat. And then once we were able to pump that down, we know how long it took to pump it down. We know how many gallons per minute we were pumping. So, we know how much water entered that area. Now, it's a situation of, okay, working with the powers that be and the engineers to identify and design a solution that will, you know, we look at on a risk-based approach. How much do you need? How much does it cost? And what do we wanna do going forward? And those are the additional follow-up meetings that we're gonna have with you guys. It would be premature for me to stand up here today and tell you, oh, we're gonna build this. Right? Excuse me? We're getting a third party to look at this and, you know, we'll, we'll, we go through a process. It's not like the, the, the process of building this, this, this infrastructure is not just the sign. There's a process that we go through to identify the, who builds this stuff. The next question that we have is, is there a plan to change design criteria and add pumping capacity? And then also on this, is there redundancy in pump capacity? In case some of the pumps fail, natural gas generator keeps operating in the power failure? I think, Jimmy, you guys wanna touch on that a little bit? Redundancy for pumping? And then we'll have Chad check on is there a plan to change design criteria?
Well, in power failures, we have a permanent natural gas generator on site. Obviously, electrical power, the grid is our first source of power. Then we have natural gas generators to kick in just in case the power goes out. As far as redundancy goes, you know, that's why we have contracts with pump suppliers. You know, if we have a pump go out, we'll get more pumps brought in as quickly as possible to replace them. Generally, uh, about, generally it's about thirty-six hours according to the operator.
The next question is, was lid nineteen designed to be flooded as per design?
Absolutely not. One house, one house flooded is one house to win.
On a, on a, on a coincidental event, on a coincidental event, if the, we have, we're forced to close the gates on the levee and we cannot gravity flow the water out to the Brazos River and we get another thirty inches of rain inside the district that flows, then yes. We, if, if everything that happened last several weeks happens again, then the results will be the same. Chad touched, Chad touched on this. The modeling that we use to design the, the entire system was the modeling that...
It's based on twelve and a half inches of rainfall in twenty-four hours. It's not based on thirty-four inches of rain.
The modeling that is set up is actually modeling that is the same modeling. It's not like we have a lower standard for lid nineteen or lid fifteen or Riverstone development than any other lid out there. The, the modeling that is done is done under the, the same offices as the other levees throughout the county. That we tried to, you know, to design it per the design specifications and the goal is to... Sure, I appreciate, I appreciate the give and take. Okay, I'll, you know, we'll have the one follow-up and then that's it, okay?
I would like to take that. It's not a design flaw. It is, it is designed to the one-hundred-year event, which is what all systems are designed for. You're, you're suggesting it's a, you're suggesting it's a design flaw. It's not a design flaw. The system was not designed to take thirty-four inches of rain.
The one thing that we do know, the one thing that we do know is that this was an unprecedented rain event. There is no, that, that, that is not up for debate. That is not up for debate. This was an unprecedented rain event.
It was a national emergency.
Alright, it was an unprecedented rain event and, and systems throughout the US are designed. The systems throughout the US are designed to similar standards. There's no system in the US that is designed to receive the amount of rain and water that we receive. It's still that flood. The next question, sir, sir, I gave you the one, right? Okay, the next one is, uh, from Keith. I think Keith in Millwood would wanna get his question answered. I understand from this that we are in, we are in a, a area designed for a hundred-year flood. Why were we told that we were not in a floodplain at closing? And that's a developer lid question or, uh, legal?
You know, you're not in the hundred-year floodplain. Well, the hundred-year floodplain obviously doesn't indicate whether or not you're gonna flood if you have unprecedented rain. But FEMA is responsible for doing the calculations that determine whether or not you're in the floodplain. So, you know, that fact remains, whether or not FEMA does... So, you know, that fact remains, whether or not FEMA does any remodeling or analysis to change the hundred year flood plane, I, I don't know the answer to that is, but the fact remains, you are not within the hundred year flood plane. What people told you at closing on the advisability of flood insurance, I don't know the answers to that. It may have been that your lender didn't require it, but, you know, there's such thing as the mandatory, I, I'm not, I'm not, I, I don't know what was told to you, but if you are not within the hundred year flood plane, it is not mandatory.
This is a question from Sweetbrier, from Eric Junker I think had the question. Evacuation order was dis, dispersed at two A P M. We evacuated at two thirty-five P M and barely made it out. Why did the water rise so fast? Thank you.
It was a function of the system being overcapacity. There was so much water in the system and it continued to rain. The, it was raining, it rained eight and a half inches of rain, eight, eight inches of rain on Monday. To say it wasn't raining is, is a fallacy.
On Monday, I, on Monday, I can speak to my own evacuation. I know that the county, they, they made the decision to evacuate when they did. The reality is, even when I went to evacuate, it was about three o'clock. We started up LJ Parkway and made it to Austin Parkway and took a left. Austin Parkway was flooded. We had to then turn back around and come back down through Austin Parkway to Highway Six. So one of the things we did is we, we looked at the, the map that was on there and tried to map our way back out, but there was a lot of water in the, the streets. It is just a function of how fast the rain was flowing and how quickly it was flowing out to, to the river or being pumped out.
Were other lids draining at that time to lid nineteen? And yes, so you can't say it's just rain, unprecedented rain.
Well, well, let me ask you a question, right? What was draining into lid nineteen? What, 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 what exactly was? Well, you're asking me a question, it's a lot of. What, what, what was draining into lid nineteen was rainwater. That's correct, that's, you're absolutely correct. Rainwater drained in the Steep Bank, which drained into lid nineteen and hit the wall.
Hey Rob, let me, let me answer one first.
I think we have a lot of yellow cards to get through and we, you know, to be fair to the people that have followed the rules, you know, we want to answer these questions. You know, I mean, we will get there, we're going to stay late, we're going to get there, but let's be fair to the people who did submit written questions and let's get them answers.
Let me answer something real quick. There's going to be a lot of, there's going to be a lot of modeling performed, uh, after this, after this event. It will include, you know, closing gates, uh, opening gates, closing gates, uh, at different times, uh, all that's going to be modeled to figure out, you know, if anything could have, uh, uh, worked differently. I, I know from driving around, uh, the community on Wednesday, uh, there were a number of houses north of, uh, of Haggerson Road that still had water to the doorstep, uh, uh, even on Wednesday. This was, this was two days after the area south of Haggerson Road flooded. So everybody had a tremendous amount of rain stacked up in their system, so. And we will model all that to figure out, you know, that's going to be part of the, part of the analysis, to figure out how big a pump station, how much more storage we need, things like that. That's going to be part of the after action plan. Asking us how, how this could happen and whatnot, uh, you know, we know what happened. Uh, now we have to figure out, you know, how it will end in the future.
So a quick question on that.
The, the next question we have is from Judy in Arbor Manor. I think the question related to lid nineteen flooding may be, clarify which sections of Riverstone will flood first, second, et cetera? Clarify expected order of flooding should it occur? So Jill, I think what the question is, is I believe that the counties came up with inundation maps?
So the inundation maps that are on the Forkton County website, if you've gone, the Forkton County Drainage District website, are only for areas that are outside of levees, they have nothing to do with the areas that are inside of levees. One of the things we can and probably will do as we move forward are come up with those same types of maps for areas inside of our lids as we analyze. It's going to take a little bit of time for us to go back and model all this and figure out where we're going and then what pumps, if we do add additional pumps, add additional storage, add additional conveyances of some sort to the overall systems. But until we do that, we can't come up with any more information to give, give out than we already have. And like I said, the inundation maps that are out there only show areas that are outside of levee systems, not inside.
A question from the terrace. Who will decide what new design factors for improvement? And those are the, the things that we will start looking at when we do the, the review of the process and coming back. And then once we have it, this is not the last meeting that we're going to have of this, we will have additional follow-up meetings where we talk about what the after action review and what the peer reviews look like and what the recommendations are. At that point, we will have additional meetings to say, okay, this is what the engineers are telling us, and then we'll make a decision based on, on that criteria going forward. Is, this is from Mona in, uh, Shadow Glen. Is there a water analysis on the floodwater that entered the home? I heard it's a cap three water, are there toxic substances that we should know of?
We, I'm unaware of us testing any of the water, but certainly in flooded conditions, you have a tremendous amount of ironi, which is infiltration and inflow in, uh, of stormwater into the sanitary sewer system and vice versa. So, uh, it is, you know, the, the reasons they tell you don't go wandering into stormwater or flooded areas is because there is mixing of sewer water with stormwater. Uh, but I'm unaware of any testing that's been performed on this water.
And it, this is a follow-up to that question. Okay, to prevent environmental hazards and people to, uh, get their lives back to the community and prevent, uh, disease, I, I think that the, the issue is related to the stormwater that came in and what is the IDI?
InI.
InI is in the water. And, and the, all of the information that we received from all entities say that you need to be careful walking through stormwater. And, you know, we can make materials available that talk specifically about that and post them onto the website, but the, the stormwater, there, there is definitely, it's not something you want to walk through. You see the news and, and everything, if you're walking in the stormwater, there's people who get really sick and walk in that water.
What's InI or what's that word?
I, it's inflow and infiltration. It's when, uh, effectively it's when rainwater enters the sanitary sewer collection system.
Does that clear? So that is when the rainwater enters the sewer system in the two minutes?
This rainwater, this rainwater essentially is, is doing wonders. I mean, everybody's heard the alarms, but, you know, uh, anybody's been through college has probably heard the solution to pollution is dilution. Uh, the, the rainwater is effectively cleaning the streets, your houses, the grass, et cetera, et cetera.